The regular meeting of the Board of Trustees Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School. Today is Tuesday, December 19th, 2023. May I have a call to order?
Mr. Kaling.
Present.
Dr. Spencer Robinson here. Mr. Quadrell.
Present.
Dr. Bonner.
Present.
And Mayor is due to come in, she just not here yet.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Quadrell, may I have your mission statement?
Sure thing, Mr. Kaling. Mission statement: Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School prepares students for social responsibility, employment, and post-secondary education through rigorous applied technical and academic programs.
Thank you. Is there any participation by the public this evening? Doesn't appear to be. Cindy Elliott?
Hi, good. Mayor Christmas.
Participation by the trustees, Julie, please.
Yes, you know I'm the district representative to the Collaborative for Educational Services and required by Latcha reports to use quarterly on the activities of the board. So I have just a few highlights. The CES newsroom blog is now located on the main website, and it's a good place to learn about the collaborative's work. The SPIFI Coalition continues to send out reports from the results of the 2023 Hampshire County Prevention Needs Assessment Survey. Their website has the reports on youth smoking, vaping, and use of prescribed, unprescribed prescription drugs. Hampshire County Superintendents had a presentation at their meeting, and I believe it's something our school leaders will be digging into. The SPIFI Coordinator is also developing a plan to support schools to implement the newly approved Massachusetts Health Education Curriculum Frameworks. And two CES researchers have been presenting the results of a study conducted on the challenges and benefits of virtual reality in secondary classrooms and implications for equity, diversity, and inclusion. If we want to explore or utilize virtual reality, we can request a synopsis of the findings or support with effective implementation to promote that we're able to access. The two researchers, it's really cool what they've done, they've been doing it for a while, funded by Meta. So I know that you have brought that topic to the board, and some of us explore it in different ways, and it would be a great resource to have for your cross town.
Mr. Quadrell?
I do not have anything at this time.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. It's very exciting in the hall.
What's going on?
Congratulations.
Bye.
May I have a motion second to approve the minutes of the November 14th Board of Trustees? All the better.
Aye.
Just wanted to appreciate again the consensus of which our secretary has the discussion of a longer, more accurate, thorough.
I'm going to turn the meeting over to our superintendent for some information.
Yeah, so the school spotlight, we're going to take a slight detour from what you see on your agenda. Unfortunately, Ms. Hughes, kind of bug or cat something, she was not in school today, and she fell off. But just to give a little bit of background, Miss Bianca can give more detail, but we'll shift gears to another presentation. But Ms. Hughes is part of Project 351. I'm not sure if any of you on the board is familiar with Project 351. It's a student-led group. They're very active with the Superintendents Association, they already go to the cave every summer. But Project 351, the 351 represents the 351 communities in the Commonwealth, and the goal is to have a student representative of each of the communities. And they come together throughout the year. It's great team building, great leadership, obviously, for the students. But they really focus on keeping their new service, equity work, diversity work, and it's always one of the highlights I have when I go to the Superintendent's Conference, to talk to the students and listen to the students in the presentation. So we're very fortunate to have our first student rep with Project 351, that was Lily. She was going to talk to you this evening about her work with the project, and specifically she was doing, she did a food drive here on campus, so that was the presentation. So unfortunately, we moved on that. But with that said, I do want to turn to have a presentation from Chef Lacy and Ms. Angelisa. Just to give a little bit of background here, a couple months ago, they came forward to the administration in looking into the possibility of an international tour for our students. I'm not sure if any of you have had the opportunity, whether in high school or as an adult, to participate in an international tour, but this is my first experience here at Smith, having this conversation come up. I have some background, my previous school, I talk about international trips. We had a pre-meeting with EF Tours, which is the travel company that we're looking at. The interesting thing here, and again, I don't want to steal the agenda, this particular tour that we're looking at is really targeting agriculture and culinary, which would be ideal for, obviously, as a vocational school. So that's why I think Miss Bianca and I, we had some initial interest, and we had an initial tour with EF, an initial meeting with EF Tours, asked a lot of, I think, very pointed and valid questions. We felt comfortable at that point to move forward. Unfortunately, the timing, okay, I'm going to apologize with the timing with these meetings. We were hoping to get this on the actual agenda, to the Board of Vote on this particular trip. That did not happen. I want to thank these two potential chaperones, this is forward, they are trying to plan a parent meeting, informational parent meeting in January. That meeting would happen before the January Board meeting. So my hope tonight is that these two can present to you kind of, you know, what the trip would be, what was detailed, sort of the costs and the expectations and so on and so forth, see if there's at least a lukewarm receptance from all of you, and it'd be no vote, but that would at least allow them to move forward, hold the parent meeting in January, see if there's truly some valid interest from the families. And at that point, we would not open up any registration, we would not be receiving any money, nothing like that, until the January Board meeting at that point, and more back and forth, do an official vote from the Board in January and then before, so that's sort of the idea. So I do apologize kind of out of context and out of order a little bit, I would value to get in front of the Board this evening, share the information, maybe answer any initial questions, and see where we are about coming in January. So with that said, to you, Rob.
Okay. So yeah, this came across my computer, I don't know, October-ish, and I was like, "Hey, Joe, can we do this?" He's like, "Well, let's talk." So, but you know, I mean, we've looked into it, we have talked with the company that provides this, we've talked with many different teachers. Nelson and Joe and I have all actually sat down, we talked with Norfolk Agricultural High School, they do this, I think, did they say they do a trip a year just about, but they planned it two years out in advance? So, and all the schools, all the teachers I've talked to that do this, and when I was at the National FFA Convention, I talked to teachers from across the country that have done this, they validate it, they say this is a great opportunity and it's a really good trip. So we brought forward, we did the survey, and you can do one on, yep, and so then we did a survey, Joe sent out a survey for us, and so, you know, we've got 23% of the people that took the survey from, or 23% of the people are their kids or they are from 2025, the class of 2025.
So there wasn't, who was surveyed?
So this was a whole parent and student.
So we were looking, yeah.
Population.
Yeah, we were looking at, we're looking at a potential tour in 2025, so current seniors were not eligible, so they weren't polled. So parents and students were sent the survey to just judge interest level, so that went to current juniors, sophomores, and freshmen.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but we would also be opening this to next year's ninth graders.
Correct.
And they were not polled, obviously, because we don't have that data yet.
Mm-hmm. So we had a really good response, I think, to the poll for the number of students that we have here, and we weren't originally going to do the class of 2025, but talking to other teachers, they said they've got a lot of really good students that probably would want to do this and benefit from it if they have the funds, so we surveyed them as well, and you can see that we kind of, we have a good population there that's interested.
So those, do those bars represent, what were they asked of?
So 23% of the people surveyed were from the class of 2025, or either parents or students.
Oh, gotcha, so this is just the number.
That's just the numbers of respondents from each class.
Okay, gotcha.
2025, 2026, and 2027, each class.
And that's combining students and parents?
Yes, it did combine students and parents. Interested in the tours, so out of everybody that took the survey, 68.8% said yes, so I would, if you want to say it's almost double because parents and students took it, then I'd say you got about 30 or so percent of parents are actually really interested in sending their children, which is still a...
Well, that's...
The raw numbers don't support.
Right. It's a little hard.
So the percentages would probably still stand, because many of the same parents and students responded, yes, they both responded yes, so the percentages are still fairly accurate.
Right. That makes sense. It's like, weird. I, yeah, so anyways, I say we definitely, we have the interest, the interest is out there, I'll tell you my students after the survey and all that, I keep hearing, "Are we going to Italy? Are we going to do Italy? I want to go to Italy. I'm already putting money in the bank, we better go to Italy." That's literally some of the things I've been hearing about this.
I definitely received several emails from my sophomore class and even some of my juniors, from the parents, you know, asking questions about it already, saying, "I would love to do this, can parents come, can family come?"
And I've even gotten emails from parents, I don't know who they are.
And we kind of pump the brakes a little bit until we know where we stand.
Right.
But there does seem to be an overwhelming number of parents and students interested in this to meet the need of the minimum requirement for us to pull this off.
Which is what?
So minimally, we're looking for at least 12 students. Ideally, we'd like to see 18 or more, but I think realistically, we're, based on our population and our enrollment here at Smith, 12 to 18 is a realistic number for us. So at least to start.
Out of the 106 or 109 respondents, roughly half of those are students, you think?
Roughly, approximately.
Roughly, it's not, I can't say for sure how many were students.
Just 50 or so.
Right. So is it affordable? It's, so in order for parents, families sign up for this, they can do monthly payments, roughly it's going to be around $303 or $333 a month if we do the 2025 tour.
For how many months?
For 18 months. So they would be able to do payments, they can, and the money doesn't go through the school, the money goes directly into the EF Tours, so the parents pay them, and they automatically, they can just have it drawn from their checking or debit account, credit account, automatically, or they can choose to do their own payment monthly and go in and pay.
We would also be, if this was approved, we would be looking at monthly meetings with the students that were interested, monthly fundraisers, long-term fundraising goals to help offset those costs, and also to help students raise money for spending money while they're in Italy.
One thing that teachers did advise is that we have spending money while we were in Italy, you know, we're going to be in Italy, so I'm sure there's some gelato we're going to want to have and stuff like that. So they did advise, we do want to, we need to bring spending money with us, just for a large group, sit down, have some ice cream or gelato or whatever.
Yeah, I think it was one of those questions that came up during our conversation with the other teachers and administrators that have done this in the past. EF Tours is kind of, you know, they're trying to sell it, and I think they do a great job, everything that I've heard and researched on that is fantastic. But the teacher said the one fallback is that they don't really promote that students should have enough spending money.
Yep.
That's one thing that we should focus on. So that's something that we've identified, we would probably want to help fundraise for, in addition to offsetting the, maybe the monthly costs or the final costs.
Yep. So we want to do some fundraising to bring in so that we'll have that spending money, and then we're going to do, well, have fundraising, mandatory ones, that we'll take that money and the, we can send a check into EF Tours, they will take the check, they'll deposit, they're going to put it into basically an account, which I then have to go into and say, and disperse it evenly among each student. So therefore, if we want to say, hey, you know, this was mandatory, kid A did it, kid B did it, but kid C didn't do it, I can take and split it 50/50 between kid A and kid B, but kid C wouldn't get it if they decided to...
One of the considerations, I want to make sure that we mention about fundraising, was also so that we could open this up to the less fortunate, to the families that might not be able to afford that $300 bill every month. You know, if we have a student that really wants to do this, that doesn't have the means, you know, as chaperones, as advisors for this trip, we'd be willing to work with them to help them come up with even independent fundraising opportunities to try and raise the money to be able to do this on their own.
I just want to say EF Tours wasn't able to, it all depends on how far out you are and what the cost is, so I know that they're saying 300 or 330, but if the tour is about $4,500 and we're 20 months out, you know, then you're looking at $225. So there is a difference of sliding scale based on that, so we don't know yet, they'll have a better idea once January.
And to build on that, depending on when students sign up, you know, if this stays open to next year's ninth graders, I know right now the price is X, but come January 1, it goes up, and come September or October, when, you know, there's a new slew of students that might be interested, that price would be different then as well.
Yeah, whatever the cost is divided by the number of months that they can pay. There's also EF Tours offers social media crowdsourcing funding, so they can send out links, and people can donate in towards their trip too.
Similar to like Snap Raise, which we use here on campus.
So they'll have like their own little account, they can, people can go in and donate money to it, and I've never used it, I don't really know how it works, but hey, you know, we can learn.
And most of that is...
And trying to make it easy on Crystal too, so it's just one check that would have to get sent out to EF Tours rather than sending out like an individual check to the kids to help them pay, we can just put it right into their account from EF Tours, so.
Quick question.
Yes.
So as you're preparing for kids to have spending money, you also should consider also tipping.
Yes.
Because some of the tours, they're always expecting a tip, so maybe as a team, the team can handle it so the kids are not coming out of pocket to do that. And then insurance, travel insurance is important.
That's all in there, yeah, it's all included.
And is this the week that you're planning to travel, is that during spring break?
Yes.
That's good, okay. And quickly tell us about how you're intertwining this with farming and...
Okay, no, I got a whole bunch here, keep going.
So we should let you finish?
Keep going, keep going, I got a whole bunch here.
Should we ask the question?
That's the fundraising, there's the cost. There is, so this is all of the cost of essentially how much per student is going to be, so right now, it's, they have, if you're under 20, they, we're not bringing past, we're not bringing graduates, we're not bringing kids that are over, you know, that age, but there is another pricing for kids that are over the age of 20, we're not going there. And right now, the plan is not to take parents unless needed for special needs. We don't plan to bring parents, sometimes they can be more of a meeting, a chaperone than being helpful, so.
Well, we think that it would help keep the group cohesive too, so it wouldn't be like, you know, family A and family B, kind of feeling like they're on their own family vacation. We want this to be wrapped around education and tie it into what we do here on our campus.
Yep. So the whole price, that is our round fare trip, that provides all of the hotels with private bathrooms, breakfast and dinner, full-time tour director, so there's always a tour director with us, and then all the activities and attractions that we go to, they take care of all of that for us, they do all of the planning, we just basically have to show up, which is nice.
So the initial itinerary would be completely covered and paid for by EF Tours, you know, maybe with the exception of minusing tipping? That's a big question that we should ask next time we meet with EF Tours, is do they tip these companies, or is that something that we need to consider?
Yep.
They have mentioned that there is some downtime here and there, where they squeeze in other things that are not in that itinerary, based on the group wants and needs and the time available, that would all be additional, and that's where we're talking about raising out-of-pocket money, so that the students might not have to like come up with money on the fly if we decided to stop for ice cream or something that wasn't on the tour, or if there was a, any number of different things that might come up in the locations that we're at.
Try some really good mozzarella cheese, I don't know. So yes.
As far as the trip being bonded, where these guys, I know everybody is saying they're really good and you feel good and all that, sometimes these trips go Dixie, and a lot of disappointed people, plus the money goes out the window. So my biggest concern, and I'm sure you're all thinking about that, is to protect, how to protect you, protect the kids, and I'm sure they have a great reputation, but I'm just saying that that's a concern.
So at some point, continue on, let's see, I got some stuff.
Maybe fast forward to the Y and then backtrack to the...
Okay, so the cost of chaperones, that, we already covered this, basically, we want eight, 12 students minimum, that covers two chaperones, we blank 18, that will allow for a third person, a nurse or a parent for a student with special needs. So there's that, next one. Safety first, so all adult travelers will have a background check, whether or not, because we could end up with, or we most likely, if we're small enough, end up with another school, just so everybody knows, every single adult is background checked, not just by the school themselves, I'd like to think other schools are doing background checks, but EF Tours does a full, comprehensive background check at no additional charge to any adult. The tour guide is with you at all times, they're bilingual, they can translate all the background stuff. If a child becomes ill, EF Tours will coordinate and facilitate and support services and logistics, including translation services, connection with local healthcare providers, that should be a C there, communication with family, and flights home to no additional cost. If travelers become unsafe, if travels do become unsafe, something happens, you never know what's going to happen in the world, there is insurance for funds being returned. I believe that families can do optional additional insurance for a higher return on their investment. Do you have more?
Yeah, so that was definitely talked about, that there is an option for families to sign up for, that I forget, I think it was up to a month prior to, does that sound right, Joe? It was up to 30 days prior, you could back out, it might have been up to the last minute.
Right, and then...
It might have been like 48 hours or something.
It was something like that. It was really right up to the wire, you could back out for any reason and be refunded the majority of your investment at that point in time. That question had come up, we were talking about that, because we were worried about the kid that maybe raises 75% of the money but has trouble coming up with the rest. What happens to that kid that now has paid all this money that worked really hard and all of a sudden can't do it? You know, hopefully, you know, as advisors, we're not going to let that happen, we'll be able to come up with ways to help that individual raise those funds, but you know, also you've got the student that ends up having a death in the family, or any number of other unexpected things.
And they do love swap outs, so somebody can come into that division.
The other thing that EF Tours talked about was like if travel does become unsafe, the first thing that they talk about is, can we shift the date? Can we move this, keep it what it is, keep the same group, but just adjust the timeframe? Can we move somewhere else? You know, and that would obviously be something that would come back to the Board and the Administration for, you know, obviously separate consideration if we ended up in one of those extreme situations. Obviously, this is something that's happened through COVID, I think that it's a, they've gotten more comfortable with those shifts during that timeframe, but...
I don't know if it was, very quickly, will you help with the logistics of getting kids passports?
So that is, that is not necessarily on us, it's obviously something that we would talk about with them, but they would have to do that on their own with their families. You know, certainly, I know I'd be willing to talk them through the process, give them presentations and printouts on where and how and the cost to do that.
Right, and send the families home.
I think that's something that we've obviously talked about more.
That would be part of the planning, EF Tours as an information thing.
So the passport is not part of the cost, if that is the concern.
No, I know, but I was just thinking of student populations who may be going, and if, you know, you just think about the logistics of how, how do you navigate that?
I think helping them navigate it, we can definitely help them with, I mean, obviously, we're not, we're not going to be bringing them anywhere, but we can help them navigate it, especially in our meetings, and sending home emails with parents to parents saying, here's how this is going, this is places you can go, this is how you sign up, sign up quick because the wait can be long, so.
Although it does sound like they just got back on track, I was just listening to this on the news yesterday, but I know one of the things that we, we talked about with this was, okay, I'm losing my train of thought.
There were two things that they talked about, just to answer that question, there were two things that they talked about, they provide all the literature information to send you and educate, and it would be the passport, it would also be the European Union having the travel registration done, that kind of stuff.
So I don't mean to throw a monkey wrench in here, but it might, it feels like we're discussing the logistics of this, where I don't know why we're doing this and how it aligns with...
Continue on, yes.
Hang on, I just want to finish my part, okay? So how it aligns with the educational mission of the school and how it will benefit our students, so it's like, I almost, for me, it's hard to get into all of this, I want to know the why, why we're doing this, and then maybe get into the challenges, but first, is this something we want to do, will it benefit our students?
Okay.
All right, so let's get through, usually, I was expecting you guys to want to know the logistics and not want to listen to the fun stuff, so I take the fun stuff. All right, so itinerary, so this is specifically designed, is specifically for vocational education.
Why, oh, so the itinerary answers the why.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Yeah, each one of these itinerary stops ties into our curriculum.
Ties into what we do, our curriculum. So we're taking the kids, you know, from Massachusetts, from here, from the Hill towns, from Worcester County, who knows, that have maybe never even left the state, some have traveled, some have traveled in the United States, maybe they've gone to Canada. We're going to take them, we're going to show them agriculture, we're going to show them farming, and we're going to show them food from another country, we're going to go take a look, it's the Sustainable Agricultural Tour. So we'll fly overnight, we go at, we fly into Milan, and then we, from there, will travel to Turin, and if you want to just click through and we can, so we meet up with the tour director, we can click through, we don't need to keep going there, all right. So we'll take a look, we're going to see some of the historic parts of Italy, we're going, so there'll be that tour, that kind of aligns on your academic level, your academic standards, your history.
Well, I build almost everything that we're doing here in terms of culinary, I'll talk about that piece. We receive a lot of our product from these locations.
Yep.
Okay, this is how it's produced, this is where it comes from, this is how it's sustainable, right? Like, how do we bring these practices back to us? How do we use them here? How do you use them in your future? If you're going to open your own business and you want to be sustainable, and the national average restaurant profit margin right now is 3%, how do you stay in business with a 3% profit margin? Well, you start looking at sustainability, right? You know, you're growing your own herbs, you're, you have your own chickens, you're doing whatever you can to cut the middleman out. I think that this ties directly into it. I've never been on one of these tours, so I don't know exactly what it's going to look like, but when they talk about sustainability and what they've talked to us about, to me, it ties directly into the things that we can do, and a lot of this stuff we do here, but showing it on a global level and a global economy, I think, is very different, okay? Does that, does that make sense? Does this start, can I answer your question?
And we're standing, we're standing with kids. And to each other, how did, did you find this or did this find you?
It came into my email, and I was like, and I just looked at it, and I was like, "What? This is perfect for us."
Say more about...
And it's perfect, it's perfect. And it's perfect, it's perfect for both of us because it is culinary and it is farming and it is agriculture. And we're going to go take a look. So if we want to go to the next one, we're going to go to an apple orchard. This is going to relate directly to your horticulture shop, your food shops. And in this, you're going to learn about how the cattle, my imagination, the way it's described is I'm thinking we're going to end up going into an orchard and we're going to see them using cattle to graze down the land underneath of the trees to help with weed control and everything rather than out there mowing all the time. Again, sustainable farming, sustainable agriculture. The cows are mowing the lawn, the cows are pooping on it, that's fertilizing it. The kids are going to see this on an international level. And then they're going to learn about the fruit packaging, how they're washing it, how they're processing it, what happens with the fruit from there. And we're going to.
So just to butt in and cut you off.
No, 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 go.
One of my first questions that came up when this came to my attention was what other schools are doing this? It was one of the big questions I asked. Who else comparable to us is doing this? I want to talk to them and I want to know if they think that it's valuable, because I see a lot of value in this. But is it really as valuable as I think it might be? Because sometimes these things can, you know, be a bust. And every school that we've talked to, right, Joe, when we sat there on that Zoom, everybody, it was an overwhelming, like this is fantastic. I know Mr. Lincoln Hall, he has experience going on EF Tour. So I don't have experience with this, so it makes it a little bit difficult for me to talk about what we're actually going to see. But I think I see the potential. I also see, you know, as somebody that's been here for 19 years, I see a very huge difference in our student population and a need for diversity in what we offer them in terms of opportunity. You know, when you're looking at competitive schools and what they're offering, and they are offering this, they've got students that are going on these tours year after year. We don't have anything that comes close to something like this. So maybe this is a first step and maybe this is, you know, the golden ticket to what's fantastic for us as Smith Vocational. But there's definitely a want by parents, there's definitely a want by students. And it definitely ties into what we do, is what I can tell you standing here today.
Thank you both very much. Now I'm ready to hear some of the nuts and bolts. And I do also wonder if, are you imagining that the way sustainable farming and the culinary arts are practiced in Europe or in Italy specifically are different enough that it's going to open everyone's eyes to what might be possible to bring back here? Or you think is that possible?
I think you're going to see some differences, yes, and similarities. I would have to imagine. I'm really hopeful, if we go to the next one, I think it's the next one, yeah, I'm really hopeful, I'm so hopeful, but they haven't given me a solid answer that we're going to actually end up at a water buffalo farm, which is something that Italy is very well known for because the water buffalo milk is the true milk for making a mozzarella cheese. So that is how mozzarella cheese became, was from the water buffalo. They used saltwater right from the ocean, right from the sea to put the cheese into the brine. So that is a traditional true mozzarella. So I'm just like, we're going to, and I was talking to the school from Tennessee that did this, and they said it was a water buffalo farm that they went to with mozzarella and stuff. So I'm very hopeful. So I think that will be really cool. I know one thing, actually culinary and animal science have teamed up in the past. We've made mozzarella with our students and we've gone to farms here and.
We weren't using water buffalo.
We were not using water buffalo. We were using actual cow milk, actually, close enough, so. You know, so it's different. I mean, we don't have a water buffalo farm. I think the closest one we've got is in Maine. There is a water buffalo farm in Maine, my, I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure there's one in Maine. Other than that, I don't know of where there might be any others. So this is something that they're known for, but what are they doing? They're still making cheese and we're making cheese here. We're still raising livestock and cattle for our food. And so we're going to see maybe different livestock, different cattle, different methods of how they're raising them, different sustainable methods, but ways that, you know, the kids can bring back and be like, wow, did you know in Italy? And there might be something we can only do in Italy, but we could do here because our land is different, our weather might be a little different, things like that. And so, you know, expanding the students' horizon and knowledge of what is out there and taking them out of their little bubble, I think, is one of my huge goals too.
Summarize the rest of the trip?
Yes. Again, so then we're going to take, summarizing it real quick, we're going to walk through some vineyards, don't worry, we're not going to wineries or anything. We're going to walk through vineyards, see that, we're going to check out some of the olive groves and learn how olive oil is made.
There's also going to be no nude beaches.
No nude beaches, no, no, we said that's not happening either. And then, continue on, that's the olive grove, yeah, olive grove wine, olive making, there's that.
Should go to Monaco.
Yeah. And then we go to Monaco. So we do cross over into France. We will take a walk along the pier, the bridge, not the bridge, the beach there. We will be going to a perfume factory, what is used to make perfume, agricultural products. It's actually, you know, a lot of your makeup, you might not want to hear this, but makeup.
Moisturizer.
Yeah, a lot of that stuff is made from the renderings from the slaughterhouse, so yeah, just FYI, if you didn't know. My students all know and they go, oh my God, what's on my face? But it's the truth. So perfume, makeup, all of that stuff's actually made from agricultural products. So there you have it. So then we leave, we come back. So it directly correlates with the agriculture, sustainable. I think we've brought a lot of sustain, especially into our ag program. We even teach a sustainable ag class. That is one of our elective classes that we teach. So we like to talk about different practices.
Obviously, in culinary, we try and elaborate as much as we can, getting as much, you know, product from right here on campus as possible between, you know, bringing the processing cart on campus and processing our own chickens in the past, purchasing cows and pigs and lamb from the farm and getting greens from the greenhouse. So I think that this all ties into sustainability, that we already have a rich history.
And we've opened it up to the whole school to help with making sure we have the numbers to go and to allow, because I mean, we have students that are involved in farming, agriculture, food that, you know, may not be in one of our shops. I mean, I know a lot of kids that are in the agricultural sector that are not in an ag shop, so.
We can study this, but our kids aren't going to understand the perspective unless they walk in that space. And I think that's really what it comes down to, is providing them the opportunity to do that. For some, it might be the only trick for all they ever take.
Yep, that's true.
Going to wrap it up.
Yeah, we're all.
Are there any other questions?
Any questions?
I guess I just have one. When it comes to the fundraising, I don't know if any of the schools talked about this, if a student fundraises and then they don't go.
So. So I believe that's something that we would probably have to talk about at an administrative.
We'd have to, yeah, we'd have to.
We'd have to have a policy in place. That's a great question. And I think I said this in our last meeting, I said, we need Crystal here for some of these questions.
It depends how we pose the fundraising, like other things. If they say that this is fundraising for that, that tour and club and they participate in a car wash, they're not going to get a percentage necessarily.
You know, maybe it's something that gets used for a different field trip for that student or, you know, whatever. I think that's something that as a group, we'd have to come up with a policy for.
And if we agree to go forward with it, and thank you both for your time, your interest, your attention, asking all the questions, having meetings, seeking everybody out, doing all of that work ahead of time, which is just the beginning. And if we do end up doing this, deciding to participate in this, I would hope that really clearly in all of our messaging, we express that every student, we will support every student who wants to go, right? That language, that we figure out a way to make sure anybody who wants to go can go. Because I know that, I mean, that's what you're trying to do is make it as inclusive as possible.
One of the big pillars of this from an advisor standpoint that we talked about was having monthly team building meetings and interest meetings, trying to make sure that we're building a cohesive group that's going to go so that everybody has constant communication with us and with fundraising opportunities and with each other so that they know each other when we go, so that they're already bonded in a group.
All right, thank you for coming in. We took care of, wrap up what we're going to add on, Joe, to get it tonight. I know you're coming back in January for the vote, so you've got a period of time there and we're as excited as you are. It's going to be a great effort for you to put this together. And as part of being chairman of the board, I congratulate you for taking this on and more to follow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shifting gears, can't promise a trip to Italy, but some updates on the school. So again, under instructional leadership, I know it might be a little difficult to see it on the screen, but I just want to give all of you on the board an update. We did finish our freshman exploratory in the middle of December, so the freshmen have been placed. I just want to give a quick rundown on shop placements, the numbers. I'm not going to get into detail as far as specific shops, but I want the board to begin to get an awareness of sort of the distribution of students and how many shops are full and how many shops are not necessarily full. These are conversations that we've had over the last several years and we're going to probably have more as time moves forward and we start talking about other capital projects on campus. So I just want to give the board a quick overview. Again, this is 150 students on campus as a freshman, as our full, according to the admissions policy, a full freshman class. Of the 15 programs, nine of them are full. Now that includes AgNEC. And I just want to, disclaimer with AgNEC, as a board, we did agree to not fill at all 12 students with AgNEC. We wanted to sort of, not consolidate, but, you know, scale back a little bit, really focus on a particular program, making sure that we're supporting the student instructors in there. But the number that we allotted for AgNEC was full. So they're part of the nine shops that are deemed full of the 15. We have one shop that was 10 to 11 students, so just about full. We have one shop that was eight to nine students, so about three quarters full. We had three shops that were between six and seven students. And we had one shop that was between four and five students. So if you look at, you know, across campus of the 15 programs, I would say four shops were, you know, either half to below half filled. And I think initially, and I know I used to do this, so I can talk about myself, you know, when I would see a shop that is under enrolled, I would start to ask some questions, why is that shop not filling? There's almost a negative connotation towards that particular shop. And I just want to step back for a second and again reinforce the point I've been making to the board over the last several years. When we talk about student enrollment and we talk about capacity, 600 students next year, we will be fully, fully enrolled by having 150 students a year. 600 students on campus, we have 15 programs. To fill 15 programs, we need 720 students on campus. So my point is mathematically, it's impossible to fill all 15 programs. That's just, it's a fact. So you see those two reminders there. Again, 150 students per year, 600 students, and we're hoping to fill all 15 shops, it's impossible. We can talk about this more, we've talked about it, you know, sort of, you know, looking at our vision and our strategic plan and we record. I just put that out there, you know, the numbers are the numbers. But I think we'll have more conversations, especially as we begin to lead into budget season, you know, talking about big picture and how, we all know, students drive a budget. So any questions on exploratory, just the numbers? I'm not here to pick on any particular program.
You had mentioned about monitoring, that they are actually creating or questioning the students going through each exploratory, between the teachers and the student, how did that come up?
As far as.
Well, as far as their participation in each class as they went through it, didn't you get a little survey or something?
Yeah, I think the general feedback, this particular freshman class was very strong. I think that the staff were very pleased with the student level. I think one of the concerns that we had by having 150 students, basically there's more competition for more, you know, for the seats. The number of seats has stayed the same, obviously, with the 15 programs. But now having 150 students, there was more competition. So how was that going to play out? It played out. We had some concerns about a couple setting districts, you know, some students from a particular town, they're here for a particular program, if they want to get into a program that is offered or offered back in the home district, there's conversations I had to have at the superintendent level. But I was pleasantly surprised how it didn't work out in the fall. I think the setting districts for the most part were very receptive, signing new tuition forms if necessary. I think there's some education that was involved. One thing I've realized over the years, this is my seventh year in the seat, and seven years as a superintendent in a particular district is like a full career. So my point is the superintendents are turning older. So, you know, new superintendents, they're not necessarily aware of sort of the exploratory and a lot of the regulations and, you know, why are students here and how can they stay or not stay? So there's been a lot of education going on in the fall. But for the most part, I was pleasantly surprised to see how it worked. I think the students worked hard, the staff were great. The NEAC, I just want to give the board an update on the self-study. So at a recent faculty meeting, the steering committee was able to put forward foundational elements in the school community profile, one of the expectations, one of the requirements of the self-study is that as the staff are working together on different committees, coming up with sort of a self-study, a self-review on the elements that were going to be assessed on, we sort of have the data and we sort of package the data into a narrative form. That narrative had to go back in front of the faculty to make sure that the steering committee wasn't making things up, okay? Did they support what was being said by the steering committee? All of that was approved recently. The steering committee now is working on the rest of the principles of effective practice. We have that data, that's being sort of compiled into that narrative form that will be hopefully put in front of the faculty relatively soon for a vote. All coming to a head in March. We're going to be hosting about eight individuals from all over New England, March 19th and 20th. And just as a reminder to the board, when we say we are hosting eight individuals, that means hotel arrangements, that means food, that means reimbursing mileage, it's money out of the budget. So I just want to 401 the board on that. But we are, you know, full speed ahead, you know, we're getting close to the finish line. I want to thank all the staff who've been working over the past year in the committees, they've done, you know, Omen's work. I want to thank the steering committee and the fact that the staff did approve what was put forward, I think shows that teamwork on both directions. So we're getting there. Yeah, I think last time we talked about NEAC, I think Mr. Aquadro, you were asking sort of the validity of NEAC, perfect timing. The Department of Ed has what they call TFM, it's tiered focused monitoring. Just to follow in line with what DESI does all the time, they change the names. We found out today, we had an orientation meeting, Mr. Bianca and I, along with Ms. Wanzick, the Department of Ed is dropping tiered, so this will now in the future be called focused monitoring. But basically, it's a review of our special ed practices, procedures, and policies. There'll be a combination of onsite and virtual at the beginning of March. So March will be very busy for us hosting DESI and then hosting NEAC. But basically, their role is to come in, review student records, review policies and procedures around special ed, make sure we're doing what we're supposed to do. So. And I just have a picture I grabbed off of our Facebook page. I think this was just a fun activity for Miss Brisboy in social studies. This was the Bill of Rights Day and she had her students sort of highlighting various amendments in the Bill of Rights and talking about the impact on students. So it was a great opportunity for the students to sort of, you know, really jump into what the Bill of Rights looks like and why and how that impacts the students. So that was great. Pulling all the wire, getting all the electrical setup, you know, the plumbing side, dealing with, you know, obviously all the plumbing. HVAC, unfortunately, we've talked about this even with the larger horticulture building, supply chains everywhere, supply chain issues everywhere. We were not exempt from that. We had an issue with the bidding process and trying to get what we wanted for the HVAC system. I want to thank Mr. Smith, sort of working with engineers and finding a Plan B. And that Plan B is allowing us to sort of get back on track. Otherwise, we're going to look at what the end of May was the delivery. If we were waiting for this particular equipment until the end of May, this project would not be done anytime soon. So thank you to Mr. Smith and his leadership on finding another path. We're still, ideally, we want it to be done by like now. We are looking at now, trying to finish up that project by the end of the school year if all goes well. I want to thank the owner's a good dog spot, if you're really a good. If you're really a good dog spot, they have two sites, one happens to be in Northampton. And the owner came up here for lunch a couple of weeks ago and just talking about the industry, the dog grooming and kenneling industry. We brought him down to do a tour of the building. He was a lot of recommendations on equipment and just sort of workflow and whatnot. So I think we're going to have an invaluable connection and relationship between the school and that particular industry. And moving on to our favorite topic, the horticulture building. We did not have a building committee meeting today. And also, we get into some of the details of why. But the last month or so, most of the focus from SMMA and the weekly progress meetings has been on site testing. So we had the existing building. There was some site testing boring done over the last couple of weeks to see if there's any contamination in the soil that would impact the site. We're waiting for those results to come back. This past Thursday on the 14th, our OPM, Craig Wilbur, attended the conservation meeting. That went well. So we had a lot of site surveying done, outlining wetlands and the buffer zones. And I'm learning a lot. But all of that so far, you know, we cleared that hurdle, which is great. One hurdle that we're not quite getting over, which potentially would increase costs with the construction, is around the electrical infrastructure. So the supply that we have down back, the electrical engineer is sort of concluding that we don't have enough electricity down back to support the new building along with animal science, along with the companion animal building that we're building that dropped with that same supply in the existing horticulture building. So they're kind of working through that. But when we look at the potential updated estimate, we'll be looking at potentially some additional costs just to provide adequate electricity down back. So that was a hiccup that we would have dealt with over the last few days. At this stage right now, as you recall, last month, the board, you voted on approving SD. That was the schematic design that allowed the project to at least move forward to this stage. We're into what they call DV, which is design documents. Unfortunately, we failed to realize at the end of December, there's a major holiday. People like to take some time off. And the estimator wants to take some time off. So that's sort of delaying this process a little bit. So we will be preparing the documents to send out to the estimator for a second estimate in the first week of January. So that slight delay, which is why we felt it wasn't really worthwhile having a building committee meeting today, which is also why, when we look at your board meeting in January, I'm recommending that we push the board meeting back to the 23rd, basically in a week, which allows the estimate to come back. It allows us to meet as a building committee, then it allows us to present to the full board to see if we are ready to approve DV. So that's the recommendation as far as the January board meeting. I'm going to get into the schedule in a moment, but again, from the board's perspective, if you're asked to vote next month on DV, if you approve, that allows us to move into what they call CD, which is construction documents. That's basically those official design documents that we need to have to then go out to bid. And you'll see that in the schedule. You're going to see a lot of overlap in the schedule. You're going to see every little delay is just sort of compounding, okay? But again, the ultimate goal of being done in the summer of '25. So I thought, you know, we haven't really looked too often at the full board. I did have to print the next three slides out. It may be easier, okay? You have the slides in front of you, or you can look up on the screen. I know sometimes the screen is very difficult while we're on. So the first one is sort of the current idea of a floor plan. To give you a reference point, okay, the top of the page there is sort of the football field. To the left would be the existing horticulture building. To the right is the animal science building. Down below, you're sort of getting into the orchard road, down to the orchard. Just to kind of orient yourself to this particular floor plan. As you can see, it's relatively simple. It's a basic rectangle. Main entrance would be on the left-hand side. Okay, you see the door, you're walking in. That yellow is all hallway. So basically, as you walk into the main door, on the left would be your classrooms. That's what you see in green. We'd have two classrooms. We'd have a simulator classroom, okay? So the simulators that you'll see later in the presentation. On the right is all the shop space. That's that orange space. Right in the middle, you see that sort of light beige color. That would be the instructor's office space. Just beyond the instructor office space, it is in orange, is part of the shop space. But you see kind of like a little X through it. That would be the climbing structure that we were funding through one of the skills that we're going to ask. You see some storage, you see, you know, bathrooms and whatnot. So overall, a very basic design, trying to keep the cost down as much as possible. On the far right-hand side, you see sort of these dotted lines. And again, that was the coming to, you know, reality, that we can't afford everything. And that's why we opted to try to maintain the current structure that we have, which is the current garage, the one classroom that remains, the headhouse, and the greenhouse. We wanted to sort of demo all of that and start anew. And we just realized we don't have the funds for that. So SMMA is designing this particular building. Someday down the road, if we have the funds, we could easily expand and include a classroom that we originally had. Part of this program was an additional classroom, we cut that out, okay? We can add that classroom back in. We can add the headhouse back in, and we can add the greenhouse back in. So that's designated by those dotted lines, okay? If that day ever comes. So that expansion would be relatively easy, okay, with this design. But at this point, we just don't have those finances to cover such construction. Any questions about this concept? The next page and, you know, the next slide in the presentation is the site plan. This has been basically what we were focusing on over the past month or so. Berkshire Design is the firm overseeing the site plan. And they've been trying to find ways to cut costs and cut costs and cut costs, understanding the overall budget that we're going to work with. You can see that dark shaded area, okay, that rectangle, that would be the building. Again, just to the north of that, the top of the page, that's the football field. Upper left, you can see sort of part of B building. You can sort of see the existing horticulture building to the left of the new structure. Just kind of orient yourself to what we're looking at here. That squiggly line would be a walkway. So if we currently have a road that goes down to that back parking lot, that road would be disappeared, it'd be gone, it'd be turned into that walkway. Why it's curved like that is because there is a grade down. You're sort of going downhill a little bit, and we have to respect ADA code. So in case we have a student with a wheelchair or a walker, that sidewalk can't be too steep. So kind of doing that, you know, curved line decreases the steepness of that particular walkway. Down to the main entrance. I want to thank the fire chief who reviewed these plans over the past week or so. And he kind of gave his stamp of approval with some feedback. From his vantage point, the concern was, obviously, we had a fire. We need to make sure that this new building is accessible by the fire department. So he gave his feedback. The main traffic flow for this, again, because we're eliminating that road down to the parking lot, the traffic would go around the existing horticulture building. It would sort of go between a horticulture building and a new companion animal building. Down behind the old horticulture building, kind of by the MS barn, there's that dirt access road. Basically, that dirt access road becomes the main access point to get down back. And you can kind of see that work on this particular site plan. You'd then pull into the back service yard, be on the backside of the horticulture building, and also have access to the animal science building. The only addition that, from last week to this week, after the fire chief looked at this, he wanted to have sort of like a roundabout to eliminate the possibility of fire trucks having to back out. A fire truck arrives on scene, then when they want to leave, how do they leave? So to the right of that service yard, you see like another dirt road, dirt path. It just sort of connects like a circular traffic flow. So a fire truck could go down there, can get close to the building, put out the fire, and then just kind of drive around and back out. So that was an easy modification to satisfy the fire department's needs. But I just wanted to give the board a brief, quick synopsis of what the site plan would look like. There's a lot of discussion about stormwater drainage and collecting that, those regulations. And they're doing, again, Omen's work, trying to figure this out under a very, very tight budget.
So that factor, that would be an access for any emergency vehicle? So ambulance or... Could also get down there and then would help. If you have an ambulance, you don't want them backing out, you want to make sure that they can get out. That's exactly it.
The next page or the next slide is the schedule. And I won't go line by line, but obviously, feel free to review this. And if you have any questions, follow me. But we're basically, at this stage, we are, you know what date it is. We're sort of on that row 22 to 23. So we're ready to submit DD, those design documents to the estimator. That's going to happen after the holiday. And then you can sort of see how everything gets bunched up. There's a lot of reviews and permitting that has to occur. Obviously, the board has to review and approve the design documents, see what the estimate is, and sort of take the course next steps. And then, you know, as long as, we keep our fingers crossed, as long as we continue to progress, I just want to sort of jump down to under bidding. You'll see that bidding would be going out typically, probably sometime in February, March, somewhere in that range. We would be awarding the contracts for construction in late April and hopefully begin to construct in May. So not a whole lot of time, yet a lot of things to happen. So I know that's one of the big concerns that SMMA has, is just remaining on schedule. So I put that out there. I just want to look back, I think I skipped over a few things. I guess I touched on it. Oh, one question that has come up. I think it's come up within the building committee, it may have come up at the full board. We've been talking about it in the weekly update meetings. Is the validity of an independent estimate, okay? Right now, the estimate that was shared with the board last month, you know, that came from SMMA. They are professionals, this is what they do. But there might be some validity to have a second estimator. Give us an idea, are we sort of within the same ballpark? We are going to get a new estimate from the same estimator, you know, but with more current designs. And we're getting closer, so hopefully it's going to be more accurate. We will have that in January. But the question is, should we go out and find our own estimator just to compare? We all agree that that is valid. SMMA does recommend that, honestly, and they try to sort of reconcile, you know, the differences. It may allow us to find commonalities, or if there's differences, we have to figure a lot. I just want to caution the board. I think right now, getting a second estimate might be too premature. A lot of the estimates are still, you know, made up money at this point. But once we get the DD documents, we agree that we probably want to have, find a second estimator to give us an idea. But we agree, based on ethics and based on the regulations, we want to pay for a second estimate. Because that estimator may be somebody who might be interested in submitting a bid. So for that vendor to have access to the bid documents, not the bid documents, but to have the design documents and have a head start, that could be an ethical violation there. And then also, as a reminder, as far as donations, you know, we've been advised, we are able to receive donations when it comes to the equipment, to material, to supplies, but not to the services. And the service of an estimate would not be allowed as far as a donation. So I just put that out there, as a board, you can discuss at some point. So I would recommend, you know, we do spend money. I know we have no money to spend. But it might be in our best interest to find the money and spend it on an independent estimate as we get closer to that point. But I would not be recommending doing that tonight. Just want to put that out there.
How much does it cost?
I mean, being told about $10,000. And today's meeting, so again, the future estimates, we're going to have one coming up in a few weeks, okay? So we'll have a totally better idea. If we go out and hire an independent contractor to give us an estimate, that would be one that we do. But SMMA, once we get into the CD, that CD phase, you know, we're creating those final documents so we can go out to bid, during that process, we'll do a third estimate for SMMA as well. So there'll be checks along the way to see where we're on pace, within the budget, and making those decisions. So there are some more checks still on our way. Any other questions about horticulture?
The video, the beautiful video that was how our last meeting was posted online was made available, and there was a wonderful article in the newspaper. What has the response been in terms of funds raised from that?
I have heard positive responses. I have heard potential. I have not seen, please tell me if I'm wrong, I have not seen a single check.
It's really beautiful video. Really well taken. Heard positive responses from people with deep pockets or financial institutions or the general sentiment of what a beautiful video.
I think there's potential donations. I don't think they are extremely deep pockets. I don't think we're going to see anything on the level of like a Smith College donation. I don't see that happening.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I could. Mr. Quater and I have both been shitting the trees around the city. Greenfield Savings Bank is in conversation to look at presenting an offer to us for some money. Northern Lions Club, who we work with very closely, the ski and skeet sale they have here, has it on their agenda to look at, to give a few thousand dollars to donate here. So there's behind the scenes things that are working hard to try and collect some money. And again, it's our community effort that these banks have heavy competition between each other. And they are very, compared to the old days, I would say, have loosened up to give money to the community to enhance their brand and participate in helping the community. So that's a plus for us, but it's behind the scenes to pull them through the girders. But then you come out the other end, just to share that.
So moving on to family and community engagement. As is the routine, we sent out the December newsletter. Scroll through, and then speaking of that particular video, you know, the focus of my article was on the governance model of the school. And then sort of that transitioned into the horticulture building and, you know, why are we in the situation that we're in? And then we posted the videos, people watched the video through the newsletter. And then we had Mr. Bianca's article, and then we got into general school-wide information that we shared out. So again, I think this is a big step moving in the right direction, better communication. So it was just another way of getting the word out about the horticulture building and sharing that video. An update on the school-based health center. I had a meeting last week, I believe it was, and they have moved forward. They have posted for two part-time positions. One is a community health worker, one is a behavioral health therapist. There is some interest, not as much interest as they want for both of those positions. Right now, the behavioral health, there is some interest. The therapist is not overly local, so we're looking at potentially doing like a telehealth, like a remote type of therapy session. And we're kind of working through the pros and cons and the logistics behind that. I want to thank Tom Moore, one of our adjustment counselors. He was on a meeting with me, and he had an excellent vantage point to talk about recommendations and advice. The Hilltown Health Network is hoping to have services up and running sometime in January, February. We have a follow-up meeting the first week of January to see where we are. I came back to the administrative team. The next step was for the administrative team with our staff team to begin to identify some students who we thought would be best served having some of these services. Come up with that list when we meet again with the Hilltown group after the holidays. We would share that list with them. They could then begin to reach out to these families. On our end, we'd be communicating with the families to let them know that we think you'd be an excellent candidate for these services. But again, these services are paid not by school budget money, they're paid more by insurance. So the Hilltown Health Network would reach out to the families, talk about the insurance and see where that paid work. So then hopefully, again, January, February, we could be up and running. Community health worker, his or her main focus is not direct therapy, okay? But it's working between the student, the family, and the community, trying to make those connections. So, you know, if you're looking for a pediatrician or an eye doctor or any kind of service out in the community, oftentimes... or an eye doctor, or any kind of service out in the community, oftentimes, as a parent, I have no idea where to look. You know, who do I call, where do I go? And that is the community health worker's job, is to make those connections, which I think would be invaluable for our students and our families. The website communications, I just want to bring this up. You know, this is something that Dr. Spencer Robinson and I have been talking about over the last couple of years. Looking at the website, you know, the website is that first landing page, sort of that first contact that many prospective families have. We just want to make sure that that website is current, and it looks, from the branding side, it conveys a message that we are the best school, that we are, and families want to come here. So looking at options on updating that. I want to thank Mr. Shear, our IT director, giving us some ideas, he's given us leads. He actually has taken upon himself to, he's given me a template to look at if we wanted to redesign the website in-house. So I just want to give the board an update there. There are potential costs, and, you know, I would advocate if we go down that road of potential spending some money, you know, there might be ways to find that money maybe within the trustees. So we'll talk about that as we get closer. But I just wanted to update the board on that work.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
About the Hilltown Health Network. I'm so happy to see that this update and that it is happening, yay.
Hopefully.
To everyone involved, or that is, you know, potentially happening. And two questions that I have. One is, where will they be located on campus? And the other question is, I know that when we visited Gateway's Community Health Center, that the real value in having staff be there long-term to develop the relationships with the students and the families and all that. So this wouldn't be, this question wouldn't be to replace you those, but to supplement those two positions. When I worked at JFK, we always had interns from Smith College, from their School of Social Work, and they were master students. And so they were older, and they had some experience, and closely supervised. And I wonder if that would be a potential resource for us to tap into, to supplement, you know, thinking those are two part-time positions. Anything more help, something to consider?
I'll definitely share that. Yep. The, where will it be based? Right now, the community health worker, as a whole, they really love the basement of the White House. And that really did draw them in, there's two large offices down there. The concern that we have is access, ADA complaint, how does somebody, again, with a wheelchair, walker, cane, or whatever, get down those stairs? It's basically impossible. So we are looking at, at least for the community health worker, we have these two offices here in the library, one you don't really use, so that might be a location for that individual. The behavioral health, if it's more telehealth, it's virtual. One of my stipulations was, feedback that we've heard, is that we don't want a student to go through an intensive therapy session and then sort of throw it back to class or shop. There needs to be sort of that touching, you know, that contact with our adjustment counselors, our school counselors. And this was the idea from Tom Moore, and I loved it. We have that beautiful guidance suite, the counselors are not glued to their office, oftentimes they're out and about. And if the scheduling would go through Ms. Kelly, the administrative assistant within guidance, you know, we could schedule those offices, make sure that they're available. And then it's obviously a safe place, it's confidential, and that student would have contact with the adult, you know, as he or she was coming in for the session and then leaving. So I think therapy sessions, it probably makes the most sense in guidance for the time being. As we expand, again, we keep talking about this office, and we keep talking about the basement. I've shared with the Hilltown Health Network about potential trailer space, and, you know, we'll see what happens. At least maybe we can get this off the ground. Professional culture, I just want to highlight ACTE. This was out in Phoenix, the beginning of December. I listed the sessions I attended, I'm not going to go line by line, but you'll see some sort of themes. I do want to just highlight Morris Morrison, he was the keynote da-da. You know, when you get to that level of a conference, the keynotes are obviously top-notch. And his story was profound, I'm not sure there's a dry eye in the conference area. He is a, he was adopted twice, so that tells you part of his upbringing. Grew up in New York, mother was a prostitute, father was sort of the kingpin, you know, sort of overseeing that operation. So that was his upbringing. His theme, though, was around music. And you can imagine, you know, a young male growing up in New York City, music was his everything. Rap was his, his genre of choice. Then he kind of talked about his exposure to country music, and how he was sort of anti-country music because country music wasn't for him. And when, you know, by default, he listened to his first country song, and he hated to admit it, but it wasn't that bad. And so he sort of used this notion, this argument of, we're always set in our ways, we always have our own beliefs, we all have our own practices and whatever, and how do we step out of that comfort zone and allow ourselves to experience something new? And when we experience something new, you have no idea what that's going to bring you in life. You know, so he sort of used that metaphor of music as sort of his message, and it was, it was very powerful. I think he has a few books out there, feel free to buy the books, great gentleman, great story. But then when we got into the sessions, and talking about AI, that was sort of the overarching theme throughout. I went to a few sessions on AI, very interesting. One term that I've learned is AI, ChatGPT as one tool, they have something called it will hallucinate. Okay, now I know what hallucinations are, that's when you see things aren't there. Well, ChatGPT and AI in general can hallucinate. And it happened to me twice. You know, when I was out there, I tried the recommendations. And one was the article I shared in the newsletter, okay, when I'm talking about the school governance model. I went to ChatGPT, and I said, please give me a three-hundred-word narrative or a five-hundred-word narrative on the Smith Vocational and Agricultural governance model. That's what I asked ChatGPT to spit out. And what it spit out was total garbage. It was inaccurate, not one truth whatsoever, totally made up. So that was sort of eye-opening to me. The second one, when I was out at ACT, they said, go into ChatGPT and ask it to give you your biography. So I did. I went in and said, please give me a biography on Angel Lincoln Hoker. And I read it out myself, and that was not me, not when I ordered. So again, the notion is, you know, and we learned it as the board, you know, down at the Cape.
Right.
You know, the programming behind it, I saw it in reality. So, you know, the learning moment for me is, you simply can't rely on it as a tool and just use it, and you don't, you have to review everything. I think it's a great starting point. I think it's a wonderful tool. But anyways, that was a big thing. And the other one was sort of, in the screenshot you see there, is the shortage of finding teachers, quality teachers. We cannot find vocational educators anywhere in the country, it's next to impossible. That one particular workshop I went in, where I took that picture, it was trying to diversify your workforce. So how do you find teachers of color? How do you attract them? How do you motivate them? How do you, you know, how do we do a better job with the diversity within the teaching ranks? And they had a lot of great recommendations in that particular workshop. So again, by far, I think it was one of the best conferences I've been to. That photo, I have to credit Mr. Brewer, he was one of the attendees, and we did a sunset hike up in the mountains outside of Phoenix. And I told Mr. Brewer, he actually provided all the attendees that photo, he blew up to an eight-by-ten, it's in my office now, so we each have it. I told Mr. Brewer, you know, if teaching doesn't pan out for him, I think he has a future in photography. So anyways, it was a beautiful, beautiful hike. And then donations, we did, we see a hundred and forty-six board feet of rough-cut maple from Yehoshokin for cabin making, so the students can make some projects, which is great. And then lastly, in the news, and you can't read these, but most likely you've seen these three articles. One, I just want to sort of highlight, it's kind of interesting, it was ten years ago, at the former mayor, sort of pulled back the notion of consolidating, okay, and making Smithville as part of NPS, and pulled that notion back and said, but we need help from the state, okay? So, you know, we won't push the consolidation, but we need help from the state to figure things out when it comes to buildings. That was ten years ago, and we're having the same conversation nowadays. So I thought that was kind of ironic. The middle article was already mentioned, it was a great Gazette article about the Horticulture Building, you know, the need for more money, and the current status. And then the article on the right was a former grad in cosmetology, he was a Florence, born and raised in Florence, and now he has his own salon here in the city. So, and again, another great success story. I'm not going to go through, but a lot of meetings coming up, okay? If you're unaware, there's no school next week, and then there's no school in January, Martin Luther King will be a long weekend as well. So, but again, when you get the minutes, you can review all those meetings. With that, I'll turn it back to the chair.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Preissel?
Yes, sir, I'm going to have to pass this off, I didn't have a chance prior. You just take one. Yeah, so Dr. Lincoln Hoker did mention that Lily Hughes, I did want to just share some information that she sent along, but she was able to get two bins of donations, which will go to the North Hampton Survival Center. And so there is a PowerPoint that I think you'll make available with the minutes for them, that does go through what she intended to share with you this evening. So I do encourage you to look at that when you receive it. And I want to thank her. You know, Lily did apply to be a part of the Principal's Youth Advisory Committee. She wasn't selected, but she did, I did encourage her to continue to find ways in the school to be a part of leadership. And she took me up on that, and asked about the toy drive, and was able to work with her at the end of October, early November, to help her set that up. Majority of the work was done by her, so really proud of the efforts that she gave. Our student rep couldn't be here today, Dom couldn't, Brandon couldn't be here, Don is playing a basketball game as we speak over in our gym. You can see our enrollment, our admissions update, we're at a hundred and ninety-eight applications, that's twenty-point-two percent from North Hampton. You can see year over year, we are tracking ahead. Dr. Lincoln Hoker did mention about the freshman placements there, you can see the actual numbers. The ones in bold are the programs that filled to the number that we have as a cap. Our school council did meet earlier today, we discussed the update on the progress of our school improvement goals, and we will begin the student handbook review process, moving forward in the January, February timeline. Youth advisory met again on November fifteenth. We discussed planning around the idea for Positive Choices Month, that's sort of just the title I gave it, we haven't come up with a title necessarily for it at this point. But if you remember from the last meeting, we are reflecting on the spiffy data that came, that was given us, and looking at the at-risk behaviors, specifically the ones that our students are doing at a higher rate than Hampshire County. So we're looking at those things. What the students are hoping to, trying to give them a little bit, a lot of flexibility around this. But presentations, outreach, social media posts, and announcements, weekly announcements centered on educating our students about positive choices when it comes to relationships and substance abuse, as well as school culture. Our next meeting is tomorrow. Spirit Week will take place when we return from break, January second through the fifth. We're going to have daily themes for, to build camaraderie, and it'll complement with our annual traditional shop dodgeball tournament on that Friday, which is something that all the students look forward to at this point. Budget, we have been getting the building-level budget proposals by departments, they're due on Thursday. We'll review those in individual department meetings with department heads, combined with, into one proposal for Dr. Lincoln Hoker, now incorporated to his budget, to the board of trustees. And those meetings with those departments will take place the second, third weeks in January and into the last week if necessary. I apologize, school council ended up there twice. Monty's March, just want to highlight that we continue to work with, it's not really called Monty's March anymore, but it's the March for, to end hunger, I believe. But it was traditionally Monty's March, and our collision repair instructor, Mike Brooks, really was able to build a relationship with Monty Belmonte, when he started that at his other employment. This year, they, as far as right now, I think they're at four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, but we won't know the final number until after the end of the new year. But just for the boards, our students are the ones that build the carts, repair them. And I believe the original cart is going to get hung in the new building from the ceiling. So that'll be really interesting. Yeah, it's pretty cool. So they continue to do that, and not only that, but Mike Brooks and this year, Chris Richards in Collision Repair, they actually transport all those carts to the start point. They, they go at the end of the night, and they fix or sort of, you know, go through and do lubing the tires and make sure everything's fixed at the end of that first night, so that he's ready to go the second day. And then they go and they pick up all that stuff. And that's completely volunteer time on their part, that they like being a part of this cause, and it's good for our students. Toy Drive, we did our annual toy drive again this year, and that's sponsored by Emily Dunis and the National Honor Society. We gave over fifty toys or donated to North Hampton Fire Department. Personnel were still posted for a health assisting instructor. We did have an English teacher that is resigning at the end of January, will be moving out of state. So we do have posting out for a long-term sub. And any other questions? That's my report.
Thank you, super informative. I am looking at the number of our students in cosmetology, and being reminded of Putnam, what I learned at Putnam, that in some of their shops are every other year, so they essentially retain one as instructor, and then do nine-eleven and ten-twelve. So something for us to think about, as, you know, Dr. Lincoln Hoker mentioned, we can't theoretically, we can't accept, we can't admit the number of students to bring all of our shops to capacity with fifteen shops. And so a way to still have as many options, but, you know, yeah, make it like an every-other-year option.
Yeah, and I will say, though, cosmetology filled last year with twelve, Horticulture filled last year.
Yeah.
Graphics had a higher level. So there is some cyclical-ness to the student interest and things.
Yeah, and it's just, there's some variability at the end. Are Brandon and Dom on your youth advisory?
Yes, they also sit on that. Yeah, so it's two members from each grade, and then the two board trustees reps sit on that.
Gotcha. And what are the parameters that you provide to the department heads with regard to the budget?
So there's a budget form that they fill out, each, each, there's broken up into sections, like, do you need textbooks? Are you looking for materials? Are you looking for training certifications? Is there additional needs, maybe around staff or personnel? And what we really ask for them at this point, the process has always kind of been, to use your word earlier, aspirational. So it's really about, tell us what it is that you are looking for in all areas. I know other school systems might do it and say, tell us your costs, or they, you know, you're going to get a level funded, or they may come back and say, cut ten percent. We've always tried to do it in a best-case scenario, and then see what we can fund. And what I like about that is that we are able to have additional funding sources that might be able to cover books at the end of the year, where we can pre-buy, or we can have a separate funds for those. We also are able to identify things like equipment or other things that we might be able to get through grants or Perkins. Just because we couldn't fund it during the actual budget-building process, it creates sort of a catalog of items
Right.
that we consistently come back to, and work with those department heads, and identify and earmark those things. Sometimes there's funds that the state releases
Right.
that we're able to use, and then we know that there might be additional grant money that we can use. So we might go after textbooks, we may go after other materials, we may go after equipment. So it's really good to have that stuff.
Yeah.
So I think overall, the feedback's been good. I think some people might look at it and be disappointed, we asked for all this stuff and we didn't get it. But it really goes into these lists and categories that I, I'm sure we could go back and run the data. I think at the end of the day, we're probably fulfilling seventy-five, eighty percent or more of those requests through other funds and through other ways. So, and it's, and once you know what you're trying to look for, it helps us go out and find that money.
Right, right. And it's, seems like it's organic, where you're asking them to identify. You're not, you're not limiting or saying, oh, it's, you know, this department's, this year it's their turn for whatever, you know, you're just sort of saying, what are your needs, and then we're going to try to meet as many of them as we can.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any reports?
We had a policy subcommittee meeting recently.
Sure, I will pick it up. The policy subcommittee has met twice since our last trustees meeting. At our first meeting on November seventeenth, we identified the policies that we thought needed attention, prioritized them in order of importance, and determined the school and district leaders we wanted to invite to subsequent meetings to include them in the review process of policies relevant to their roles. These are the policies we'll be reviewing in their chronological order. Conference food reimbursement, which we're bringing to you tonight for your consideration and a possible vote. Parent guardian communication. Parent guardian communication, parent guardian opt-out rights, acquisition of library materials, graduation requirements, longevity for all employees, sick time and the sick bank, and a general policy manual review and update at the end of the year. At our meeting on December 15th, we were joined by Rebecca Wanzick, Jovianka Mike Parks, and Leslie Skans Hodgson. And we discussed the parent guardian and library policies. We will be gathering more information about these before we bring them to you.
Okay. Chairman, for someone, please.
Kind of just going on what Andy was saying about the companion animal building. So the kids are still working on roughing in electrical and plumbing. And the cost of copper pipe and cast iron pipe is extraordinary to hide. They keep going to the supply house and they keep trying to slow them down. But what they got to do with, so even the light fixtures are more expensive. We got to talk about that tomorrow. I'm trying to get these, just eight-foot LED pendant lights for the cathedral rooms is a huge cost, so. But hopefully starting this Saturday, we're going to start bringing power over there, cutting into the distribution panel and getting the transformer in there next week and putting in some panels. So when the kids come back, they can start dropping the wires into the breaker panels. Currently, we're out to advertising to put the new sewer lines out back. Two manholes, run out of that building, fix the MS barns, chronic problem, the sanitary line coming out of there. So hopefully we don't have a hard freeze and the guys can still do it. But that's what, that's what we're looking at right now.
Excellent, thank you.
Were we impacted at all by all that rain and flooding that hit the city so hard?
Nope, but I did see the pipe out there start to drink into our field. I got pictures of it going out.
Maybe, maybe what are your thoughts about that?
As long as the stream bank doesn't erode, you keep taking away our pasture.
And how does it look so far? Too early to tell or?
No, so the city hired an engineering company. They put some markers out originally, so they come and just check those. But in 26 years I've been here, we've moved the fence line back three times, you know. Just, I mean, the river, the stream is moving. There is a sewer line that runs right down the middle of it or it cuts out. So it's, it kind of makes the erosion a little worse in spots.
Do you think the system they installed to dissipate the energy of the rushing water is adequate and working? And that's scouring?
I'd have to go on the end. I can show you the picture. It looks like there's a new stream running right through our pasture when it's running.
So is that a no?
I wish it wasn't there, but I'd have, you'd have to go down and check it. Ultimately, it's, how does it affect the stream bed when it goes over the bank? Thing is, when you get all that rain, the ground's super saturated, it's just going to run on top of the ground. It's not going to sink in at all, it's just going to run as fast as it can. So once it comes out of that hole in there, it's on its way.
Excellent. Crystal?
I am very happy to report. Past two years, the business office has experienced a few staff that have been out for a nice length of time. So I'm happy to report that we are back to full staff, which is wonderful. Currently, with the operating budget, we're, there's nothing concerning with expenses. The, as Mr. Bianca talked about the budget forms, so I'm beginning to put those together and create a binder for each administrator, depending on what roles they have, Mr. Parks and Ms. Carter, they get separate vocational and academic. Yeah, so we'll prepare that and send that out to everybody to prepare for the meetings. I did want to say that one of those, one thing that Mr. Bianca and I also use that when we start looking at a wish list for Dr. Lincoln Hoker for the end of fiscal year, if there's time that we have additional time that we can use, we can use this fund as well to help prioritize things. And it's, I think it's been super helpful. The school lunch program, so it's called the Community Eligibility Provision. And previously, what would happen is parents would fill out the free and reduced forms and that would determine the percentage. The percentage level was 40% at one time. If you were over 40%, you qualify for free. Free lunches for the whole district. They did change that to 25%. So we were previously around 37%. We were wavering like very close. They changed the percentage to 25%. What that does is, as we all know, that gives us the opportunity to provide free breakfast and lunch, even though the state did need it. So the good thing, during Masbo, one of our last meeting, Rob Leshen, he's the Director of Foodservice Services, he did present and was just explaining to us how important it is to make sure that when we, that school districts get to that level because instead of the state funding these and reimbursing, it comes from the USDA, which gives us the opportunity, the state obviously, opportunity to use funds elsewhere. So I'm happy to report that I did receive the application for the grant card. So that's very exciting. We will have to add that to the list for the Policies Committee to review and put forward to the Board. Scale and Auditors are, were here today and he'll be back tomorrow to audit the FY23 grants. One item that came across my email today was unemployment. So the city applies for seasonal designation for the athletic, for sports. And we're normally awarded approved. This time it came back denied for several, for pretty much all of them except one for the spring. And what they are currently doing, they are, sorry. I know, that's, they are currently looking at the whole season. Instead of looking at it where it was determined by each, you know, each winter and fall, fall, winter, and spring, they're now taking it and it's based on the 20 weeks. So that's why what could happen is any potential coach could apply grant funding, which of course, that's very alarming. Our Chad, the, I think he's the director, he is, has already filed an appeal. So I would definitely keep everyone updated because that will be a cost. Definitely a cost.
And more so, as we were talking earlier today, when we have internal coaches who are also teaching or whatever, most likely this is a minimal impact on those individuals. But if we have an outside coach coming in, that's what we're communicating with them, right? So not that we want to prioritize until candidates, but that might be an indirect decision.
And I did pose that question as well. So if we do have a coach that's here in staff and they, you know, fulfill another role and they do coach, can they, do they qualify? So just a question. Chad did, that is something Chad is also asking about.
Thank you. Okay, new business. May I have a motion, a second, to approve the payment of FY23 invoice to Orchard Electric for $428 from Facilities Revolving?
So move.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion, a second, to approve for discussion with possible action, a vote on electronic approval of warrants procedure?
Second.
Is there additional discussion?
Yes.
Thank you.
The mayor had a concern that our current process for electronic approval of warrants might constitute deliberation and therefore be a violation of open meeting law. I contacted the city solicitor, Ellen Seawald, for guidance. In his opinion, our process does not meet the requirements of the open meeting law. No governmental bodies permitted to deliberate or take action on a matter within its jurisdiction by email. The legislature has accounted for this by allowing the body to designate one member to approve warrants. And Attorney Seawald's advice is to have us designate one member to approve the warrant and then to place them in the packet for the next meeting. After that email exchange, I attended the collaborative board meeting that I reported on at the beginning of the meeting, where I did an informal survey of the representatives present about their warrant signing process. Had them all in a room, said, hey, what is your process? And every single one of them said they sign warrants electronically. They don't have a single designated signer. They all reported that warrants require approval from two school committee members. So I was surprised to learn that. I shared that information with the mayor and the city solicitor and Dr. Lincoln Hoker and asked about the MPS process. They have one school committee member who's appointed to sign warrants and there's an alternate if the signer is unavailable and they're still done in person. So we may have gotten some different information from different sources, which led us to do what?
What we're currently doing?
Doing, yeah.
Also, MASC is very clear about it.
Right, so you shared those with me too. Also, how your people want to, yeah. Which I thought that was very interesting to be in that room with all those other school committee members. And just to be clear, there's also, it's a hybrid meeting. So there is a screening for virtual members, but there are a bunch of people in person. Yeah.
Do you recommend tabling that?
No, I recommend that we designate one person to sign the warrants and then, sign all the warrants and then a second person as an alternate if the first person's unavailable to sign. And that all of the warrants that are signed are part of our board packets at the next meeting.
So are you following what Ellen said?
Right, and MASC and VST. Do you have more that you want to add to that?
No, that's just, the MASC is very clear that it needs to be a single person. And just sort of maybe a little bit more of an explanation from the solicitor is once you, even if you had two people, that would be considered a Subcommittee of the entire committee, which then would be subject to review, which is why it can't be more than one.
So that's what I would recommend. So we have, we don't have a motion or a vote on it, but that I would move that we designate one person to sign the warrants and a second person as an alternate.
So do we need a name or do I just designate one person?
I, does the chair designate all Subcommittees? I can't, I don't. Yeah, so then you would designate somebody.
So what do you recommend?
And you designate the signer.
And then an alternate.
So.
Are you first or am I doing it?
But they could still be done electronically.
Electronically, okay.
Then everything we're getting electronically and you're asking for two trustees to approve.
Or just one.
It's going to be true.
What we've been doing, okay?
And so those packets are now going to be, we're going to get that whole packet of?
Do they need to be printed?
Or what you would call a batch? You know, we get the email, batch number, whatever, blah, blah, blah.
But not, so like we had when we went in and signed in person?
Yeah.
They would be here that we could look through. So I don't think there'd be one for every single person. Do they do that?
No, well, we upload our stuff to, you know, electronic so people can look. We don't print because that, that would be a, at least a.
So we can keep, so everybody can keep signing them, seeing them electronically, but not until after the next, after the trustees meeting?
Yes, so they would be, so they would appear on the packet or when, you know, maybe when the agenda gets sent, they would be attached with the agenda as another document that had them all in one document would probably be easier.
Gotcha. Does that make sense to you?
So I do think we should put Robinson as the signing for the warrants and I would be happy to be second.
All right, so we're, are we going to see them as they're generated? Like every couple of days, you send out three or four?
Because that's a violation of open meeting law.
Okay, okay, I'm just trying to get this straight in my head.
So I'll be the only one, if I'm understanding this right, I will be the only one to see them. And if something happens and I can't get, I can't, you know, whatever, can't, don't have access to email or something, then Mike will be the only one who sees them until?
And then they get approved?
Right, and approve, approve, approve. And then Deb sends out our packets in advance of the meeting.
Okay.
We'll get all of those warrants in one, I'm hearing, the mayor's saying one document, all at once.
I think it's really, make it easier.
Yeah. Is that, how complicated is that on your end?
Is it electronically or will it be?
Electronically.
Electronically. And how, so?
So you're still, excuse me. I'm assuming you still can send out the batch, what you call a batch, saying you need approval. It'll go to Julie. She will sign off on it. If she can't, I guess she'll notify you to reach out to Michael.
Right on.
Right? And then we get these in our electronic package for some time for the next meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
With the agenda, so then, okay.
So you basically can keep doing what you've been doing.
We just don't include anyone.
You just don't need to include everyone. Right?
Yes.
So motion, right?
Yes.
Motion to designate Dr. Julie Spencer Robinson to approve warrants and alternate Michael Calathia.
To the coin lane.
Thank you. So is there any additional discussion? Yes.
Second.
No.
Is there any additional discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. From the Policy Subcommittee, may I have a motion, a second, to approve the updates to the travel reimbursement policy?
So.
What are the updates?
Review that second.
We're going to review them right now.
Okay, second.
So I'm going to turn now to Dr. Lincoln Hoker to request.
So technically it's an update because working within the Policy Subcommittee, we have a policy, DKC, the Board Policy Manual. And that was more very generic. It was reimbursement policy, but it's sort of out of date. So what we did was we used DKC and we modified the city policy around reimbursements and travel. So what you see here, it really modeled after the city policy. And I will highlight sort of the differences and why we, you know, we're recommending that we do deviate from the city policy. So the opening, and this has been vetted by the administrative team, obviously it went through the Policy Subcommittee. So what you see here, all the administrators had eyes on and some quality feedback. We want to make sure, the opening paragraph talks about written administrative approval. And we put that in there because we want to ensure if a staff person comes forward to say, I want to go to this particular workshop or this particular conference, we can approve that, obviously. But we may not necessarily approve all of the costs associated with that. So we may say, you know, we will cover registration, but we're not going to cover mileage or we're not going to cover everything. As the administrative team, we have to provide that approval process. So it's not just an automatic. So that's what that opening paragraph is talking about. It's just ensuring that there's approval ahead of time. Then it gets into the procedure, which is basically copied from the city. The eligible expenses is very, very similar to the city policy, okay? The major deviation is on the meal reimbursement.
And this is what we want you to consider.
Right, this is really the crux of, okay? Going to many conferences over the years and getting feedback from people who go to the conferences. The issue at hand was the meal allowance. So the city policy states you have it per meal. So in particular, the day, the current policy is $10 for breakfast, $15 for lunch, $25 for dinner. So a total of $50 for the given day, but that $50 is prescribed by the specific meal. The procedure is you collect your itemized receipts, you submit the receipts, okay? Tipping is included under the current policy. But what we found is, do it per meal, we felt it wasn't fair to the attendees for the most part. So if we have professional respect and professional trust for an attendee going to a conference, that individual as an adult may not eat breakfast. They just may not be a breakfast eater, as an example. That means he or she lost the opportunity. That $10 allowance is now off the table, okay? And we all know that many times, a dinner nowadays is probably going to cost you more than $25. So chances are, if we as a district is valuing this, you know, the adult going to a conference and that adult has to eat dinner, most likely, that meal allowance is not going to cover the dinner. The recommendation here is to create a daily allowance, not a per meal allowance. So rather than taking that $50 So rather than taking that $50 and breaking it out by meal, that attendee would have the $50 for the day, and how that attendee wishes to divvy up that $50 is up to him or her. So again, if I'm in a breakfast eater, that's five, okay? That $10 could go into my lunch or to my dinner. It just provides more flexibility, more latitude for the attendee, which we think is a professional courtesy. So that's the big change. Honestly, everything else, when it comes to the tolls, the airline, the car rental, the lodging, what you see, okay, the verbiage there is copied from the city policy. It really is on the second page, talking about the meals, moving to a daily allowance rather than a per meal allowance. The other change was in the tipping. So currently, tipping is allowed under the city policy, up to 18%. And talking to the leadership team, the common current practice is typically a 20% tip, so we are gonna allow up to 20% tip. But keep in mind that the tip is still part of your daily allowance. So if you're paying a $10 tip, that's 10 of your $50 for the day. That has to be kept in mind. The other deviation from the city policy that we wanted to add in, and this was some great discussion, was around, certain conferences handle food one of two ways. Some conferences have a meal as part of the conference, and you pay for it as part of the registration. And in that particular case, the attendee kind of blocks out, okay? You get that free lunch, okay? You don't have to pay for it, you don't have to pay for it as extra, you just pay for it as part of the conference. So your $50 might be able to go further, okay, if you go to that particular conference. On the flip side, there are conferences, as an example, the Joint MASC/MASSS Conference Down to the Cape is a prime example, or by summer, the Super Tennis Conference, where paying for the registration is separate from the meal that they also put on. So the joint conference Down to the Cape, we pay X number of dollars for the registration for the attendees, and then for us to go to the dinner Wednesday night and Thursday night, that's an additional cost for that particular dinner. What the policy is proposing, if we opt, if the attendee opts to attend that meal, and we pay, as a district, we pay for that additional meal, that additional cost is part of the daily allowance, okay? Most likely, in practice, that's probably gonna influence people to say, I will do the conference meal, I'll go out to a restaurant, but that would be up to the attendee. One caveat that we wanted to put in here to protect the district, if the attendee says, no, I want to have that dinner, okay, at the additional cost, so we pay for that meal, and then the attendee decides at the conference to blow off that particular meal and go out to a restaurant, that restaurant meal will not be reimbursed, because we already paid for that dinner, okay? So we're trying to protect the district as well. So again, very similar to the city policy, the big change was moving to just a general daily allowance. The protocol is the same, tracking the receipts, submitting the receipts, there was change in the tip. And in just detailed language, because of the conferences that we often attend, and dealing with those meals that are part of a conference or not part of a conference.
And I will only add that the, you know, sort of impetus for this is that these educators are going on their own time, they're leaving their families, they're leaving their responsibilities here for the benefit of the school and the district, and to extend them the courtesy of some autonomy in terms of how that allowance is spent in the day.
And the $50, in practice, as somebody who does go to conferences, under the current policy of the meal, at the end of the day, I'm still paying for some of my food out of my pocket, okay? It's not fully reimbursed, it's just the cost of food nowadays. If we move to this daily allowance, the $50, it helps, but again, chances are, and alcohol's not reimbursed for obvious reasons, that's it there, chances are, it may still be difficult to get through a day, you know, within $50, but I think we're getting closer, and as you mentioned, I think it's just out of respect for the attendees, so.
Is there any provision, so if an event or something, they're going to something that's like just a, you know, like a legislative breakfast, or something that's really just for part of the day, or if you're traveling and it doesn't encompass, you know, you'll have some part of it that won't encompass a full day? Is there anything that's sort of...
Like prorated?
Right, yeah. Like if you're leaving in the morning and you're getting breakfast, but then you'll be home by, you know, noon, then that would be a $50 day where there are only the...
Yeah, that's a good point. Currently, as has written, there would not be that provision for like a prorated...
I think that's why the city policy is very...
Do we, do our educators go to events like that, that are a portion of a day?
Oftentimes, no. And I'm thinking, if I'm attending a morning workshop at UMass, because the department events, putting something on, it's seldom, but I guess it's possible.
So do we wanna add language that says...
If you're gonna add language, you go right back to what...
No, I don't agree with it. I think that's nickel and diming, in my opinion. I mean, the person's taking time out to do these things for the benefit of the school, whatever, they should be taken care of in some way.
This is a fair point, Mr. Quagio.
Let me get this straight. So, so you have a $50 daily allowance to spend however you want, the tip part of it's included in that amount, okay? That's understandable. But then you, like, the example of this recent conference, so we have the dinner included, so does that say that dinner was $25, so then we only have a $25 daily allowance?
Yes.
I don't necessarily buy that, but...
But they can opt out of that dinner.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a choice. So they can say, no, I don't want that conference dinner, I wanna go out on my own.
Yeah. Yeah, and I understand the part that you, so you go out on your, you opted for the conference dinner, you go out on your own, you're not gonna get reimbursed for your own meal, if that makes sense.
Right. And the conference dinner has already been paid?
Yeah, yeah, already been paid for, absolutely.
Back to the mayor's comment, and I think that's a fair point. I guess I would say, the prior written approval could cover that. So there are, again, conferences where we put a call out, if you're interested, please let us know if you wanna go, we're not gonna cover X, Y, and Z, part of this policy. So we could say that if we know that this particular workshop or whatever is only in the morning, and part of that approval could be, if you're looking for breakfast, we'll cover breakfast, but we're not gonna, don't stay out, you need to get back to work, we're not gonna cover a lunch or dinner. So I think there's a way through the approval process.
But then how much would breakfast be allocated for? Because you've now taken out those differentiations between those meals.
All right, can we? I'm having a time issue. I have an MRI in Springfield at 7:30. I didn't think we were gonna, I should've mentioned that earlier. Looking at the agenda, I thought we'd get through this, but we got this executive session. I'm gonna have to excuse myself.
We still have a...
Okay. All right.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So let's finish this one off.
So as far as the Policy Subcommittee, we've already had a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
Well, it's, I mean, I just suggested some things that you might wanna think about in terms of an event, just, or you could try it out for a bit, see how it goes.
And see if those, the contingencies should be included in this policy, or if we're okay without it.
We will become an overseer, to oversee this situation. So, now hearing any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Carter, are you excused?
Yes.
Would you be all right? Tim already left, so I'm gonna read the chair moves to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Open Meeting Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, 2, to conduct contract negotiations with non-universal businesses and industry here, and to reconvene an open session for possible action. May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Kehl, in? Dr. Spencer Robinson here. Mayor Ciara? Dr. Bonner?
So, should I make my motion now?
No, we're gonna exit. So, the chair requests a motion, a second, to approve the 3-year, '24 through '27 contract of the school business administrator, and a roll call vote.
So moved. Second. Okay. So now we have Mr. Kehl.
Yes.
Dr. Spencer Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Ciara?
Yes.
Dr. Bonner?
Yes.
And Dr. Bonner, a needed motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.